We're gonna welcome everybody tonight to join in us and we'll start off with Pies of Elysium.
Pies of Elysium, Sudak, 9th 6th turn, to Republic Forces, One Nation, Real, Invisible, 13 Justice.
The fire exits are marked and if you have your cell phones with you, we ask that you have them turned off so we don't get interrupted in the middle of things. And can we have a roll call?
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Bosso La Forest.
Here.
Roger Black.
Here.
Marion Alexandria.
Here.
Patrick DuHane. Steven Ipan.
Here.
Alan Reese.
Here.
And can we have a motion that the meeting was advertised as required?
Can I make a motion? Second.
Okay, and roll call.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Bosso La Forest.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexandria.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
And do we have a motion to approve last once in minutes and waive the reading of those minutes?
So I'll make a motion.
And roll call vote on that.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Bosso La Forest.
Same.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexandria. Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
And then we can go to whole business with Steve.
Uh, whole best, no, business, chairman's gonna request for an extension. A variance twenty-two ninety-three from July of twenty twenty-three. Uh, three ninety-nine covered by the head road. They were originally granted to remove a pre-existing non-performing twelve-by-twenty-four detached garage and newly constructed twenty-four-by-thirty garage in the same location. It didn't meet thirty-foot front yard. That back was encroaching. Uh, we believe they got caught up in some other construction and haven't been able to meet the timeline of this and they're asking for an extension.
And who, wait a second here.
May I approach?
Yeah, come have a seat.
Yeah, for a variety of reasons, uh, one of which I have a major construction problem, problem, uh, in the front of the house that took a long time, deck reconstruction. So, uh, existing garage has been demolished in November. And I expect after, uh, August to be able to find a contractor to do the foundation.
Uh, right. And I'll open up public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody here like to speak to this matter? And not see anybody raise a hand, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go to our board members for their opinions or questions. So what would the length of time be that you want to have for an extension?
My hope would be to request a year extension through July of twenty-five.
I'll, I'll make a motion to extend.
I'll second.
Okay, show of hands. And roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Bosso La Forest.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexandria.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
I'll submit a letter to that.
Okay, done.
Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Good night.
Next sign, our next one is fifteen fourteen A and B. Daniel signs representing Applebee's at eighty Center Drive. Uh, we have a bunch of stuff for this one. Cause there was original request that was done when we were thinking again to twelve years ago. Mr. Hale can remember that. Uh, they're asking to request to update signage, A, replacing eleven awning signs on the building where the total awning signings are four hundred and sixty-five, as well as B, adding an eight square foot welcome back sign in the building in the entrance that would be excessive of the allowable in a T-five center district. This did go down to the county for a two thirty-nine M referral. The county, uh, didn't have enough, uh, members at its, uh, third, third of July meeting. Not a lot of people wanted to attend the meeting day before fourth of July. So referral fifty-three twenty-fourth Plattsburgh zoning board of appeals, Applebee's area variance at eighty Center Drive, updated signage, replacing ten awning signs on the building, uh, with a total awning square footage of four fifty-two and install a new awning sign of thirteen square feet as well as adding, this is right, right or wrong, is eight point five, or eight square feet on the welcome back sign to the county. Uh, the building entrance that would be excessive of the allowable signage in a T-five district. The Clinton County Board, Planning Board at its July third, twenty twenty-four meeting was unable to provide an official decision on this project as they did not achieve a quorum. The county planning board will not hold another meeting until August seventh, twenty twenty-four. And thirty days will have passed since the official receipt date of this referral, receipt dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Therefore, your local board may render a decision on this project at this time without an official county decision. If no decision has been made by your local board within thirty days, the board would like the county to review the application. Contact the county planning department and applicant can be placed on the agenda. Tom Bombard.
And on top of that, I believe it was for Panera Bread that there was a question if the wheat on their awnings was gonna be considered to be signage. And it was a branding thing, the operation, and that was what was decided on Panera Bread. So the same would hold true for Applebee's with branding put on their awnings.
And Buffalo Wild Wings too.
Buffalo Wild Wings also too, so.
That being said, Alan has some details, some pictures that were provided and some that were taken today.
Mr. Chairman, just wanna point out where Applebee's currently is, in case somebody doesn't know where it's at. This is Lowe's here, Price Chopper's over here, Planet Fitness up here, this is Ronnie's. Applebee's sits in the middle of the parking lot right here. And it's all zone T-five. So here's Applebee's, you can see some of the awnings on there right now. All three sides. So here's picture today, so Applebee's here, they're actually changing this apple. They love it, different design, but that's not part of the, um, sign, sign package in front of you tonight. These awnings right here, so there are three here, there are four on the side over here, three on this side, one in the back. They are changing this, this little swoop and change it by putting an apple, outline of an apple on there. Once they do that, that now becomes a sign. So here's the three on the opposite side. These is, this is the back door where you get your pickup. So there's four signs right here, four awnings here plus this one here. So this is what they're changing it to, they're putting this apple outline on the awnings. So this is a before, what I just showed you over here on the right side, the left is what they're changing it to. Again, once they put the symbol on there, now it becomes a sign. This is that back door where you pick up your, uh, your food or they bring it out to you when you do a drive up. This is the front. So the second part of this is the welcome sign. So as you can see, this here's got an arch over the entryway here. And now they wanna take the arch out, they wanna put this little extension over, and it says, "Welcome Back." Here's the opposite side, the little apples there. There's that, "Welcome Back." Okay, Mr. Daniels, all yours.
So yes, there's, uh, pre-existing awnings up there now. They're gonna repurpose those same awnings and just repaint them and freshen them up. And, uh, those are, they're a minimum awning. And they, uh, they're gonna take, take the swoosh pattern that's off of it and then they wanted to put the silhouette of the apple shape up there just to get some more brand identity, if you will. Square footage of the overall awnings, I think, is the four hundred measurement. Uh, the actual square footage of the branding, uh, as a geometric shape is like a hundred and something square. So that's the actual dimension of the room. And it is on three sides of the building. Uh, they're trying to grab some attention for people coming from Runnings, you know, like don't, doesn't, don't see the front sign. People coming from the Lowe's, you know, side of the parking lot, uh, just to make awareness of that building in the middle of the parking lot.
Well, they do have to drive by to get to Runnings.
How, how they get there, I don't know, but, uh, uh, they're just trying to make some awareness of, of the building from, from the additional sides. From the, uh, some through the middle of the parking lot.
So we have to do an A and B on this one, correct?
Yes, the recommendation of the attorney, Mr. Matt Farlow, that's not here. Uh, we made a mecca if there is going to be a vote to be even considered that there's an A and a B request of their own of similar awning signs. As you alluded at the beginning, chairman for awning signs that have been denied in the past, Panera Bread comes to the mind, Buffalo Wild Wings was another one to in fact make sure you do, uh, break the two up.
Open up the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? And not see anybody raise a hand, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And, and I'm not, A is, uh, is A the canopy or the?
Yeah, A is the awnings, B is the canopy, is that, or A?
Awnings, which would be, uh, considerably over what square foot it would be allowed. Cause anybody should do the balance and test before, go much further. Uh, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. There are considerable amount of signs on the buildings already. Uh, undesirable change in neighborhood character of nearby properties, that is not a, a real problem seeing that the place is commercial. Whether the request is just substantial and I'm considering substantial. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, I don't see that. And whether the alleged difficulty is self-created and that would not necessarily negate us from taking variance. So anybody have any comments or questions on that?
Just wanna clarify again, you're talking about the awnings in your report here, Jesse, you're saying that it would only be an additional hundred and ten square feet?
Correct, yeah. If you took the, the outline of just the apples. Yeah, so, so what he's asking you to do is look at that sign right there, that awning. Instead of looking at the entire awning as a sign, which is the way we define it. He's saying draw a box around that apple symbol and you actually save some certain square footage. But it's still on the same cloth, still on the same thing.
Little song.
Yep.
That, that's like taking that thing and putting it on the brick wall and saying, oh, just the apple part of that red is awning. No, the whole thing is the sign.
Understood.
So, because they can spin any way they want to, it's by our definition.
So on your description here, the hundred and ten, is that for all the awnings?
That's for all the awnings of the apple silhouette shape.
Okay.
Correct. The four hundred square feet-ish is the awning total square footage.
So anybody else have any questions or comments? And the motion to be issued to approve the variance or deny the variance?
Say since, uh, it would set a precedence that we don't wanna set because we have denied in the past.
And we've already set a precedence.
Right, that, uh, we deny a motion.
Second. Show of hands on that. I got it.
Oh.
And roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Bosso La Forest.
No.
Marion Alexandria.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Okay, and go to B, which is the welcome back eyebrow or entrance area signage?
Yeah, or the, uh, front canopy where the main entrance is, they just went, but welcome back, uh, for customers coming in, just a little, little information for them and just like give a little touch of, uh, design. Um, they're gonna change that canopy out to a new shape. And it's, uh, something they've been doing now, all their branding for their new locations, so, same kinda style. And then they wanted to put, uh, some fine lettering up there, that's like an eight point five square foot area of, uh, welcome back.
And this was one that was actually brought to us ten to twelve years ago and again was rejected at that time. Okay, uh, open up the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak about the welcome back or the entrance area? And nobody raising a hand, I'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And I can, do, board members have any questions or comments that they'd like to?
When you go back to that twelve years, was there any variance given to their application for signage back twelve years ago?
Oh, they have a lot of variances.
Do you know?
Well, they had the Applebee's on two different sides.
Correct, and then an off-premise freestanding sign for the Applebee's that's on.
On the front entrance?
Yeah, it's up by the consumer square. No, it's an open station. They have an Applebee's sign out.
The westerly entrance.
Oh, on the vacant lot?
Yeah.
That island that sits out there?
Yeah.
As well, it was a second freestanding sign on the property.
Gotcha.
Cause they got one on.
It's named, right?
Yes, yes. So they have an extra freestanding sign, additional adage for multiple signs on a building.
Mm-hmm.
So like, four, three.
The last time they came back, it was, it wasn't denied, it was tableed and then they never came back for the welcome sign before.
Okay.
But during the discussion, it was brought up that, you know, why do you need welcome back? Why can't you put a informational sign if you wanna thank people or welcome them back or whatever? Why do you need a third sign on the building? And there was other opportunity inside the window.
So then the question I have, seeing that it's eight point oh five, right? Are you just taking the letters or are we just taking that canopy? And that brings it to sixteen point nine square feet.
Just the lettering area, yes, just the lettering area. It is not a sign, it's an awning. I mean, however, you wanna classify it, but it's, it's an awning, it's a, it's a canopy. And so we're not considering the whole thing a sign, we're getting just the area of the lettering.
Otherwise, you'd have to include the whole face wrap, Applebee's is written as a full sign, if that were the case, wouldn't you?
Well, that.
I'm not saying that's.
That piece sticks out, it's a, it's a sheltered area.
Right.
And that's the front of that sheltered area. So what is it, Alan, is it eight point oh five or sixteen point?
So, so this one, because that canopy is part of the structure of the building.
Uh-huh.
It's not separate, it's not an awning, whether it's just sitting out there creating shade or whatever, it's actually part of the building, then it would be a box around the letters.
Okay, so it's eight point oh five, okay.
All right, uh, doing balancing test, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means to the applicant and whether the building has several signs on it already. And undesirable change in neighborhood, character, nearby properties, that's a commercial area. Whether the request is substantial and you can say that it, they already have several variances over what would be allowed normally. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, it would not have those. And whether it was self-created, it doesn't necessarily apply to this. So any board members have any other comments or questions?
It seems to me that message, it's not branding, it's, I don't know what it is, to be honest. Um, it could be done inside, just as easy.
So the motion for B would be to?
To deny.
To deny, okay, yes, second.
A second.
And show of hands on that. And roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Bosso La Forest.
No.
Marion Alexandria.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So the next one, you represented Brennan. Okay, uh, the next appeal is sixteen forty-four Brennan GMC. They asked for an area variance to request to be allowed to keep an unpermitted hundred and twenty square foot sign on the rear of the building, which violates prior variance. Approval of the signage of the building and allowance for the signs in the rear of the building in a T-five, uh, the, the new T-five, uh, center district.
Mr. Chairman, you remember, two months ago, they were in front of you. At that time, they requested a table, you gave them sixty days to report back and to furnish any further information. We've received no further information, so they're automatically back here tonight. Uh, it was advertised in paper, so it's up to you if you wanna conduct a, uh, second public hearing. And I can go through and re-show. So now we're just down the road, we were right here where Applebee's was, now we're down here at Consumer Square. And we're talking about Brennan GMC, which is right out here on the corner. It's all still zone the same, T-five. A little closer view, so we'll look at this right here. So he's got a, they have a sign currently up right here on the back of their building, which is not allowed. You can see a little bit right there. That's the sign on the back of the building, so all it does is faces Consumer Square. They are under a site plan where they're actually, uh, they've got property on this side over here on, uh, Sorrel Avenue. They're gonna do, uh, more display area vehicles back through here, and you may have noticed they've clear-cut all the trees over this side. This is, I believe, is gonna be employee parking, something like that. And that's where we sit as of today.
Uh, no new information has been submitted, uh, for your review at this time. No, uh, nothing substantial's been done within sixty days.
As long as it was advertised, we will open up the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? And not see anybody raise a hand, we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and they don't wanna merge the property together.
Um, so yes, I talked to the customer, they do not wanna merge parcels, they wanna keep them individual parcels for now. And, um, they would like to just, uh, withdraw their application as a, as a formal. Um, he did not send a formal letter, he, uh, will do so this week, uh, so we have backup information.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how long is it gonna be before it comes down?
Uh, again, that's up to you folks, um, if we had sixty days, it'd be great, but, uh, whatever you tell us is what it is.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that this started out as an OTR, order remedy for them. They didn't, they didn't chose the option to come to try to get a variance for it. So the OTR was over ninety days ago. Um, they've had the last sixty days of doing absolutely nothing, they could've took it down anytime, the last sixty days. I would recommend thirty days or less, have them take that sign down that they illegally put up.
Board members have any comments, questions?
How difficult is it to take down, do you know?
Uh, it's not hugely difficult, I mean.
It's just imported sign, I don't remember calling.
Yeah, it's mechanically fast into the building.
Yeah.
I mean, we can do it in thirty, if that's what you like, uh, you know, thirty days, we don't have to schedule other jobs and stuff, you know, then. The customer's asking for sixty, but, yeah, whatever you see fit. Go for thirty, go for thirty.
Uh, so the motion would be to have the sign removed in thirty days. Okay.
Is that a motion?
They've got a motion, yeah.
That's what you're saying there, it doesn't.
Okay, move that, we request to take or require to take the, the sign within thirty days.
I'll say it.
And show of hands on that, and then roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Bosso La Forest.
Yes.
Marion Alexandria.
Yes.
Patrick DuHane.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night, Jesse.
Good night.
Mr. Burdo, uh, in front and center. The next one is twenty-one oh six, it's area variance pre-existing, right, come right to the desk, right up there. Front and center, the request to be allowed to amend a previously approved, uh, appeal, construct a two-story family home. Uh, Laurel, Laurel Avenue, you guys, it's been a little while since we saw it. So Alan does have all the details of what they're asking for and there was some other documentation that was, uh, given to us that we can go over.
It is lying right now, Alan.
Laurel Lane.
Laurel Lane.
Oh, I'm sorry, Laurel Lane. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is also an A and B, cause they have, uh, three yard bill, side yard setbacks here. So I'll refresh my memory, where's that, cause it's been a while since, uh, he was here. So if you come down Route Three through Katyville, right almost to where the Sanac line is, there's this little gravel here, this is called Laurel Lane. And he has a little parcel here that I busted against the river. You can see it, this area is all R-two. So here it is, this is what it, uh.
It's jotted over.
This is, this is two thousand, yeah, the lines here are exactly right, just shift to the, to the right, correct? So this is what it looked like in two thousand and eighteen, he had a shed on there, he came, got a variance at the time, he was gonna remove this and then re- erect a, uh, a little cabinet in its place. So this is what it looks like, you know, now, so he has removed it. Here's what it looks like today. And here's what he's proposing, so you'll, you'll notice he's got the twenty-six hundred forty. And this is the ground floor. He's, so actually instead of a cabin, he's now looking at a single family home. This would be the upstairs. Okay, sir, anything you'd add?
I had a perk test done. The perk test, I'm sorry I didn't have much time to prepare on this, I just got these today. They're about middle, midway right here and it's just barely passing. I got granted a twenty-five foot variance. I misinterpreted, I thought it was from the edge of the road, from the center. The old building's actually got ten foot of variance. I'd like to put it there so I don't have to go over the septic or push the septic further down towards the river.
As my memory is, was the question about flooding from the river at the time?
Uh, yeah, it comes up to, if it does flood over, it comes up here, the hundred-year flood plain is down here.
Okay.
The septic's here, I already had the perk test done, he said it's doable and it's, I have to have Phil brought in for it.
Now, the other question that has just come to our, on our, the fact that there's a, I think it right away.
Yeah, I, uh, got ahold of, uh, the gentleman that came down, it's area NISAG, go down there to take a look at the place. They put a post in over here, a little flag. He said, uh, their easement is, the typical easement there.
Thirty feet.
Well, fifteen feet on either side of the line was directly overhead. Holds here on the corner of the property and it goes across the road, so it doesn't even affect anything on my side.
I'll read it in the record, just, uh, just so we know, so the NISAG, uh, from Troy Trombley was submitted to a seven-eight-twenty-four from NISAG and Adver, Ad and Guard Company. Dear Mr. Ipan, this letter is response to the reference meeting notice concerning a proposal to construct a one thousand forty square foot residential home at the above address. To my knowledge, the town's meeting notice is the first time NISAG has ever been approached about this building proposal. Upon review, NISAG has been determined that the proposed building location would be built within the company's thirty-foot right-of-way as reflected in the language below, which the easement provides. Structures and other obstructions within the easements and right-of-ways that in the opinion of grantee may interfere with construction operation, maintenance of lines, of its lines of lines. According to NISAG, accordingly, NISAG rejects and opposes Mr. Burdo's proposal because the location of the structure would fall within NISAG's established thirty-foot right-of-way and would inhabit the company's ability to operate, maintain and upgrade its infrastructure. Regrettably, due to scheduling conflicts nor I, uh, neither I nor a designated company representation can attend tomorrow's meeting. I would happily to meet with you with the zoning board to discuss at a different time. Troy Trombley, Program Manager, Government and Community Relations, North Metro Region, Route Twenty-two, Plattsburgh, New York. They also went down to the county again for a two thirty-nine M referral, they had some, uh, also issues. Uh, Shannon Thayer, they did not meet, uh, as I said before, for this, cause they did not have a quorum. The members presented have submitted the following unofficial comments to the town, so they are unofficial, uh, because they did not have a quorum. Members presented had concerns about the size of the lot and the placement of both the septic and well, particular though soils are poor. Uh, so those are the unofficial planning board, cause they didn't have any. So you have NISAG and also that were submitted.
Okay, um, yeah, the septic was done by, uh, Holzer, the perk test. This guy I talked to was the guy that came down there and approved the thing for NISAG.
Has it been approved by Clinton County Health Department?
Uh, not yet, but it moved that far, because I wanna make sure to get this done first before I move forward with something else, spend more money to have something, I don't have anything to show for it.
When did you meet, when did you meet with the NISAG guy?
I just called him this afternoon, I was made aware of this issue, I stopped by to get these. Uh, his name's Jeremy Dragon, he told me to give you his number.
So he went down with you today?
Not today.
Oh.
When he had gone down there to set up, you know, like put the flag out, inspect the place.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the first time he called, he was down. I called him today after I was made aware of this, asked for. I called him today after I was made aware of this and asked for a reason to what's going on.
Yeah. But you haven't, you haven't looked, you haven't done the research with the county office to look up the easement to see what the easement says or where it is, or just like.
I have that because I was just made aware of this today.
Okay.
Uh, the best thing I could do was contact the gentleman that did this.
Sure.
NISAG employee that does the front site. I don't know any.
Yeah, because I don't think there's anything electrical that goes down that way. So I'd be curious if they have some kind of survey showing where that is, because even their letter doesn't tell us where it is or doesn't give us any evidence.
It doesn't explain the easement either. I mean, you would think it would explain the easement, and it, like I said.
Well, easement would be, it's recorded at the county office. You'd have to go get that. But it's not going to, I don't know if it's going to tell you the needs and bounds, but NISAG didn't give us that either, so.
But I just don't understand whether we go so far into that whole process with me setting up with someone that's in direct contact with me through an email for this project and it goes through.
Right.
And.
And then turn around and say it's.
It just doesn't make sense to me.
Right, right, yeah.
And his, his theory makes perfect sense to me, but like you said, I don't have anything as a breakdown, sort of.
Like, my opinion is, is that until we, I don't feel good, Grantee, considering. I understand that. Put you into a position where you, they don't let you build. Or they're going to say, okay, we got to take part of the house off to be able to do something to their line because it's. It's like a miscommunication.
To one end and the other's what it sounds like to me, one of them. Because you do have the high-power lines down the end of the road.
Yeah, that's not thirty feet for sure.
Access it to put those in, you know.
So the expense that Mr., uh, just for experience on Wallace Hill, we have, uh, NIPA lines. Somebody put in a home. They didn't research. They didn't do title abstract. When you do a title abstract, insurance shows deeds, easements over any upset property. Uh, the people put the home in, NIPA came in and said, here's our attorney, so here's the whole deal. You're going to move or remove your home. The pad, the foundation, the whole deal, and actually have to turn the home because it was in, even though it's not, even though they own the property, you can't build underneath an easement or right-of-way. Their easements and right-of-ways are very specific, so we wouldn't want to put you in a position to restart building.
This whole thing, I was a curveball. I had no idea because it's.
Maybe we should just table it. You're suggesting you have a table.
Yeah, I, I really have everything ready to go, and I'd love to get started tomorrow, but I guess we're just going to have to wait. So a month from now.
So you're going to make a request that we table this matter to you and get further clarification?
No, because, yeah, no, I, I feel so good on your end either at this point.
All right, so you want us to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
What about your, uh, public hearing? Open the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody here like to speak to this matter? And if not seen anybody raise a hand, we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And, uh, go ahead with the motion.
Make the motion that we table it for four months.
Again, I'm sorry for my misinterpretation on that. I'm very concerned with forestry. Now I'm more aware now. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
And a roll call or show of hands and a roll call.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Vassal LaForte.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHin.
Next one is twenty-three twenty. I was gonna say your name incorrectly. Andrew.
Septi.
Septi, sorry.
I was waiting to see if you did it right.
Front and center is you, I would say. Yes, it's called Spicy D Four.
Yeah.
Uh, the rest of it, air variance should be placed at twelve by twenty-eight, free fat shed in the front yard. Doesn't meet the thirty-foot front yard setback in an R-one district approaching twenty feet into the front yard setback, leaving ten feet to the property line. We do have a survey map. I think it's from RMS, uh, that was given to you guys, but Alan has some better overheads, projectors, and some pictures that may help you guys see it a little better than what was submitted.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is Route Nine coming south out of town. Right here, this is Wood Cliff Drive coming up this way. And Point Cliff is this short section over here where it actually comes down this way. So it actually dead ends right here at the front of his property. So as you can see, this is all R-one. This is the property right here. So it comes in, you can, well, lines are a bit off, but this is his property right here, this square. You can see that the, the road actually stops right here, but then it then travels down this way to another residence. They have an easement that gets him down here. I think there's a, uh, water pump station or something right in here that we have an easement to get to that for maintenance. So here's what it looks like today. So you said the front yard, the, the, the frontage of the right-of-way is right here. But, so we go back thirty feet from here and run all the way across the front of his property. That, and he wants to put the shed over here on this side, and that's why it's in the front yard setback. So again, the road comes up and stops right here. So this is the frontage on the right-of-way. The, the front yard setback goes across this whole property line right here. So it's back thirty feet. That's why he's here for a variance, because he wants to put the shed right here in the corner. Did furnish some pictures. That's the back of shed. Let's put in there. Okay, sir, anything you'd add to the board?
Um, the only thing is from the end of the public road to the face of the shed is probably about seventy-five feet back. Okay, it's adjacent to the side yards of both of my neighbors.
So you, you're talking about from where this yellow line is right here, going this direction, seventy-five feet?
Yeah, approximately seventy-five feet to the face of the shed. That front line, I have a hundred and fifty feet across that front lawn.
So you actually have an easement for the neighbors to get down to their.
Yes. Egress, ingress.
Yeah.
Going around.
Now, does the town follow that or?
No. Think we could change that.
And that, it's actually our water and sewer easement going through there?
Sewer, yeah, we have a drainage, uh, drainage, water and sewer easement going down to our pump in our lift station down on, uh, uh, the neighboring property.
Yeah.
Right inside. And just like that, the gentleman before, we don't, we don't want to see anything built on or around there because if we ever have to dig up, we don't want to end up painting buildings. We've done it a couple of times where if we did push snow or dirt or anything, the town was then responsible for said shed up in Katyville. We had it when we were doing our, uh, uh, water, uh, towers. We ended up, so that's why we, uh, frown upon any building within that right-of-way.
So the right-of-way that is going across for the public sewer. Okay, when you did, when I did the calculation for that, on the edge of the property to the edge of the easement for that is approximately thirty-five feet. So I would still be able to maintain the shed outside of the parameters of that easement.
And is there, why is the rationale for having it right so close to the property line when you could go on the other side of the easement area?
Due to the fact on the other side of that easement, it is all ledge rock. All right, um, and it is also extremely uneven. It would add, uh, substantial cost to be able to do that. And then also too, I don't even know what that stone would look like even when I opened it up. That spot that is going in is a relatively flat spot, okay, and it is all soil.
We'll open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody here like to speak to this matter?
I believe there's an easement along our property line for the power lines.
Man, could you go up to the mic and announce who you are?
Sorry.
Yourself, thanks.
Hi, Francis Schiff. I'm in the property immediately adjoining his.
So the one right here to the, to the bottom?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's an easement, I believe, through there for the power people to come through.
I believe that's what that is shown right here, this right here?
No, that's not a dotted line that goes across the property line. If you go out here to the right past his lower right corner, there looks like there's a dotted line that extends right along the, the property line.
Or says overhead.
I don't know what those boxes mean because I can't see in this small, uh, computed, uh, it just says computed corner. I don't know if that's a post and rail fence, if that's all it is.
This is OH, overhead. So where it goes down in the triangle in this corner right here, Vassal.
All right, I'm just looking at this here, and it looks like the, this line is just reflective of the fence line.
Oh, yeah.
That overhead looks like it just comes off from behind his property and then probably goes to his property.
See those?
I don't know what the, uh, offset there would be to that overhead line. Do you know what easement you have to go across there?
For a power line?
Property, but yeah, the power line that cuts, that feeds your house.
Oh, it does feed my house.
No, but I mean, you'd have to know what the easement is because you take half of that, and if it cuts into this corner, I don't, I'm not sure. That's what I'm looking for. You follow me?
So that's the line right there and whatever, if this distance is too close, you'd have to pull it.
Vassal, it looks like this is OH, if you look closely, all the way across.
No, I don't think that goes across that way, that.
Can you see the lettering?
No, it doesn't.
It's OH.
It goes across to a triangular, and then it comes back in and feeds back into his back corner of his house. So he would actually be underneath that.
Well, she's saying it cuts on the, on the bottom part of the triangular, not just the high bottom. But I don't see it, I guess, on your side, so I don't know how far that goes.
That, the front right pole is all overhead right here. Okay.
Right.
On that map, there's a pole.
See, I can't see that. All I see is his fence line.
See, I'm seeing OH, 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 all the way across.
Mm-hmm.
So it goes right there. It looks like you have a couple of easements for that.
So we know what the easement is off of this whole electrical line?
I agree. Could be a hundred and twenty-five feet, could be a hundred and fifty, so seventy-five on each side, could be a hundred, so it'd be fifty on each side of the line. But either way, it's right on your property line.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're only ten feet off, that, I don't know, I can't. Without seeing it, I don't know.
I mean, he would, he would, he would still be underneath it. Of course, I think he's got to get the information from the.
But you can see that, the shadows. If you look on this one, you can see the two overhead power shadow lines.
Yeah, the, the power line pole is literally right on the, the final right corner of my property line here, on that map.
So you can have, get a little bit nicer.
Okay.
And this board is, is tasked with granting the least amount variance. That's why when Mr., uh, Hale and Blue asked why it can't put on the other side. So there's questions of ten and ten if there is one, but the reason they ask is on your own property, you could put it on the other side of the easement. Oh, the town of Plasper is, or, or easement on the other side. So they say the least amount variance that would possibly be granted. Those are some of the questions this board has to justify.
Yes, you'd still have an issue if that line cuts up your side of, to feed your house because you might have a variance there as well, or a, a setback off that power line.
Okay.
See where I'm saying, where the triangle goes up and goes to your house?
All right, so you're going to make a motion to enable this? You have to have some more information?
Yes.
I'm close to public hearing portion of the meeting and.
We'll make a motion to table it.
I'll say it.
Second, show of hand on that, and then a roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Vassal LaForte.
Yeah.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alexander.
Yes.
Patrick DuHin.
Yes.
Same thing we recommend to the other guys. If you've got title abstract or title insurance in the bottom property, you'll have a full description in any and all easements crossing your property.
I do.
The easiest way, if you have the full detailed one, it should be in there if there is any.
If it's on the title search, it'd be abstract.
Yeah.
So it's just table thirty days, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, new to me, so what does that mean? I come back to this hearing thirty days?
If you want to. You don't have to, but it just keeps you from having to pay again.
So you get thirty days to provide them with info. They wouldn't ever want, again, put you where you put a shed in there, then NISAG or somebody comes in and says, now you got to move your gravel, your pad, everything that you did up to there.
And if you opt to put it somewhere that doesn't require a variance, you don't, you can just call.
Yeah, so if it was ten feet off your property line and on the other side of easement, no variance is done. You adjust the permit.
You're all set.
And you're good.
All right.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You too.
Two-three-two-one?
Two-three-two-one, Johnny Glenderwood. You guys like to come up front and center. Uh, they're looking to request to be allowed to construct a eight by forty-two open deck on the front of their home, which doesn't meet the fifty-foot front yard setback in an R-four district approaching in four foot into the front yard setback, leaving only forty-six feet to the property line. Alan's got some details and some pictures that were provided.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're out on come, run ahead. This is come, run ahead road coming down this way, now gonk one. They're right here to second house in. They're all zoned R-four out there. You better see, this is their property right here. Here's what the house looks like. So they're looking at leaving this, but they want to extend and make this a porch all across the front of the house out to where the end of the steps are. So the steps would remain, it'll be recessed into the front porch. Here's what it looks like today. There's a setback, so the, the house right now, the setback comes right up to this door right here. That's where the fifty-foot is. So this little landing still implies they want to come out to the end of the stairs. This is what they're looking at. It's eight feet out and then all the way across the front of the house. So they would encroach four feet into the fifty-foot front yard setback.
Can you go back a couple of, right there?
Okay.
It's just an idea, but if you put your steps towards where your driveway is, you would have much freer movement across the whole porch, the whole deck.
Instead of cutting off the deck here.
Yeah, right. You're cutting the deck into two, basically.
We have to change, we have to fix the porch. The porch is bad.
Right.
No, no, we're not, we're not discussing that part, but, but you're right. If they built a whole new porch, you know, you're fixing that.
Yeah.
We have to fix the porch, it's, it's all set.
Oh, no, we're saying you're going to fix the porch.
Yeah.
And the deck is going to tie right into that.
Right.
Right level.
But it's all going to be one.
Right. But all I'm, all I'm saying is, is take those steps and put it on the end closest to your driveway.
Mm-hmm.
That way, there, you're not making basically two separate decks.
Right, you open up that whole area, and where the stairs are, you could bring it all the way forward to the end of the steps and have that all deck. And then put the stairs coming down the side. So that whole deck will be what, eight feet out?
But then we'd have to do, then we'd have to do a new awning or roof or something over the front door. Because that's where the front door is. So we'd have to redo the whole front of the, of the roof. It would mean a lot more than, what they need, what we're going to do is raise the porch because it's settled. Raise the porch and then cover it with the same.
Uh, that's just an idea that
Yeah.
threw out there.
Yeah, it sounded, it sounds really good. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the porch's been there for twenty years.
Yeah.
And we would, that would do that.
Okay.
All right, uh, public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody here like to speak to this matter? And if not seen anybody raise a hand, we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting and go on with questions from board members if they have any other comments or concerns that they would like to have addressed.
I just want to clarify, these steps are going to be inset into the deck. That's what you're saying in order to meet the, the overhang there.
So you still have an awning over, basically a covering over it.
The one that's there, yes.
You're going to have to put supports there to hold that on.
Yes. Yes, they're either going to replace or repair the pillars that are there now.
And I'm not here to question the design of it, but based on what the chairman was saying, I mean, for safety reasons, if you're still going to have two posts in the center of your deck, it seems like you would cause a, it, it could cause a, a safety issue because you have those steps right close to your door. You'd always have to be walking around those steps to get to the left.
You have to walk around those steps now, and you can't walk, you can't.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. I'm just saying, if you're, if you were going to get rid of the pillars, I could say, well, that would be a, uh, aesthetically, not look nice because you've got two posts in the center of the deck, but you're going to have posts there whether you have it your way or the other way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and why does it have to go across the whole deck? From the front of the house, I mean?
So it can sit out there.
Yeah.
Watch the traffic. Some feet on that side of the house. Three quarters of the day.
Right, but I'm just saying as opposed to just having it on one side.
Yeah.
To minimize the.
And he's had harder, he's had it.
No, I'm just talking about shrinking the size as opposed to getting it full length. If you, if you're sitting out there on one side or the other, it seems like it would still sound.
And the whole thing is for really better that way.
Uh, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means to the advocate, we sort of have gone over that.
Uh, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means to the applicant, we sort of gone over that basis right now. Undesirable change in neighborhood character or to nearby properties, there are several out there that have had, uh, extensions put on. Whether the request is substantial or be a variance, actually. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, and I don't see any of those, and and even if it is, uh, self-created, it doesn't necessarily negate us from granting the variance, so anybody have any other comments or questions?
It doesn't actually true a lot more than the steps that are already there.
It'd be a pre-existing non-change.
Four feet for those steps, anyway, we just.
Well, it'd be pre-existing, those steps are intruding already.
Yeah, yeah. So it's four foot.
Steps aren't necessarily counted, right, you get the four-foot ingress, that is a counter.
That would be right off the front of the house, so.
Well, it'd be underneath the stoop, they said, because the stoop is at the fifty mark, so they'd have the four feet from there, which is the same where it is, except you're building it across the whole thing, so you've increased the variance replaced by the square area.
Four-foot variance, am I correct stating that? Yes, okay.
So for that reason, it doesn't bother me.
Okay, so you're gonna make the motion then?
Fine.
I've made a motion.
I made a motion to approve the variance.
I'll second.
Show of hands. A matter of all call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Vassal of Ford.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alvin.
Yes.
Patrick DuHin.
Yeah.
That's it.
You can stop it and see if you have two minutes.
Seconds last appeal. Uh, twenty-three, twenty-two, Owen Flynn on Gravely Point Road, area grants request to be allowed to construct a new single-family residence on a parcel that, uh, would not meet the fifty-foot rear yard setback in an R four district approaching thirty foot into the rear yard, only leaving twenty feet to the property line. Alan has some details that were provided to us.
Here, Mr. Chairman, we're still on that Comerhead Road, this further down Comerhead Road, we went past the school. This is Lake Breeze comes down here, turns into Gravely Point. This is where the town road actually ends and becomes a private road after that, we're looking at this vacant parcel here. It's all zoned R four. Here's kinda what that vacant parcel is like. It looks like today, so their, their driveway is actually over on this side over here, this is the somewhat of a turnaround circle area here. And it's provided by the engineer, so there's their driveway, here's their house, the variance is for this rear yard back here. All yours, sir, anything you wanna add to it?
Sure. Uh, I would say Mr. Flynn's looking to construct a house on the last lot, vacant lot on the Gravely Point. The difficulty with the lot, as they can see by the topography, that there's about fifteen-foot grade difference between what the existing rock is, exposed ledge, so you saw in that clearing with the house they proposed, and the roadway, so the idea of putting the house close to the road makes the driveway significantly steeper than it would be if we placed the house further back, because it's more of a run that out. Secondly, what's interesting about this is that, you know, being the last lot in the subdivision, there's a fifty-foot strip of land here that goes into the larger piece of Mr. Coffee, that if the board looked at this as a corner lot, meaning here's Gravely Point, this is a future road that gets access to the remaining lands, that this would be frontage, this would be frontage, this would be a side yard, this would be a rear yard, and if you looked at it as a corner lot, we actually would fully comply with all the setbacks. So what we were looking to do is keep, you know, a side yard setback here, and again, the side yard setbacks to the covered patio area, were actually another almost eight feet further to the main house, but keep the side yards, the rear yards, so we're agreeing to kinda push the house further north and leave this strip of lands as a front yard corner lot, which would allow for that future development, because otherwise, if we put the house, you know, we could put the house further down here, what that would do is require, if this road was ever developed, they would have to come get a variance to build a road, because they would create a deficiency on the neighboring lot. Luckily, you're.
Advantage of you moving at this point, there's no reason why you would move for that.
Well, I mean, it's, you can see the topography, you know, this is a higher spot, so if I cheated down a little bit, I could actually get lower in elevation. So, you know, ideally, you know, what we're looking to do, that's, you know, is really keep the driveway to the north side, having the length a little bit longer, because if we get, if we push it back, you know, this thirty feet further, it shortens my driveway up thirty feet, it just makes a much steeper driveway. But I think more importantly, if you look to future development and the potential list, because if you look back at the tax map, it's a fairly large piece of land that, you know, today it's not being developed, but to basically block off any access from Gravely without a future variance on the roadway, if we looked at it as a corner lot, again, it's fully compliant. So, you know, although it sounds substantial, you know, going fifty to twenty, if it was a corner lot, as it hopefully will be one day, as more development happens, it's fully compliant. So it's, you know, so it looks substantial, but really, if you look at long-term planning, if future goals of the town to have more development, you know, I think it's not a unreasonable request. Similarly, if you look at this lot, this is the skinniest of the lots on Gravely Point, the rest as you go further back are much deeper. So it really kinda keeps the character as far as the distance off the road is what the other houses are. So it's really not changing the character of the neighborhood by any means, uh, and it's really looking, you know, taking into account for future development, so.
So you basically started off with a blank piece of paper. Correct? Started off with a blank piece of paper.
Yep. Well, we have to approve subdivision lots, so there are some exceptions.
But I mean, the, the house shape itself, that could be, if that wasn't the design, it could be pushed up with keeping your driveway that same line.
Well, if I, I mean, this is the garage right here.
Right.
So I mean, right now, basically, you know, I'd have to cut the house in half in depth and have, you know, a house, to keep the driveway at this length, my house would have to be, you know, twenty-three wide, you know, which is relatively skinny and.
No, I'm, I'm saying, I mean, that's the design of the house. If it was another design of the house, it could be.
Well, what I'm saying is. Right, but what I'm saying is, it's not a, it's not like we're building a four thousand square foot sprawling mansion, you know, it's a somewhat modest house when you can look at, compared to all the other homes on the street, so it's, you know, keeping the character of the neighborhood, rather than, you know, to keep the length of this driveway, to put a skinny little, you know, put a single wide in the back, I think would be more of a change in the character of the neighborhood compared to neighboring homes. So keeping the house of a similar character of neighborhood, taking into account future development, looking at it as if it's a corner lot, which it really is, you know, minds, uh, that with those considerations, you are actually compliant with your current standards. So although it is a variance now, when that road gets developed, the variance would no longer be needed.
So I understand that patio doesn't count as structure, is that correct?
Has a group over it, so it's part of the house.
It says covered, not concrete.
Oh, I thought you said concrete patio, no, covered, okay.
I'll open up the public hearing portion of the meeting, anybody here like to speak to this matter? Let's talk about the mic, name, sir?
Um, it's James Coffee, and I live at forty-two Lake Breeze Drive, and I was the one who started the subdivision, and, um, the, the way we have it is the way we want it, and that's privacy, and it's privacy for everybody there. Uh, we haven't, um, as far as I know, everybody in the subdivision has followed the rules. And, um, for example, the, they talked about that road going in there for future development. Um, I'm not ever gonna develop it, and, um, I don't know that you can say, well, if somebody develops it so many years from now, then we can say change a zoning, or, you know, give somebody a variance for something that might not happen for fifty years. The other thing that I wanted to mention is, it's just not a few feet, I, I know that periodically you read in the paper, somebody puts in a swimming pool or something like that, and it's a side yard, and they say, I wanna go over two feet. This is sixty percent of it. If it were, if he said, we have to move it, the other thing too, is they knew when they bought it, they knew it was R four, the plans were there, everybody knew it was a forty-foot setback, or, or fifty-foot setback, so it's not, it, it's nothing that's new. And the, I, I, I guess I just feel that, just one other thing, I have the opportunity, I live on Lake Breeze, to develop other lots on Lake Breeze, and I haven't, and the reason I haven't, is they don't want to, I want the privacy. And about eight months ago, um, one of the people that live on Lake Breeze, at one of the lots I subdivided, they said, can you give us another, we wanna buy another ten or twenty feet, and I said, you know, no, I don't, and they would've paid me a substantial amount of money. I just said, I, I'm, I'm there for the privacy, and, um, when I bought it originally, there was another lot on the lake, and they both were for the same price, and a lot of people opt to live on the lake, and that's certainly understandable, the lots are smaller. I opt to have the privacy, in fact, one of the lots down there, I think it was Dr. Ambler, he had two lots and he merged them, so he's got, I think, two and a half or three acres, whatever he's got, because he wants the privacy, and that's what we want. And, um, even as it is now, noise, travel, and so forth, and so, um, and, and like I said, the big thing is, this, there wasn't any surprise here. And I don't think you can say, well, I'm gonna design my house this way, because I designed my house this way, then it's inconvenient to have a setback, and therefore the kind of zoning rules of the town should be disenfranchised in a way because of the design of the house, thank you.
Just like to note that the subdivision that Mr. Coffee created established a forty-foot rear yard setback, not a fifty. So, the character of the pre-existing subdivision is forty feet, which typically the town is ruled that if a subdivision establishes a zoning classification for whether that development can continue for the subdivision.
So you're right. Alright, uh, nobody else, so we close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Let's have some new data.
When was the subdivision created?
I represent something better than ninety, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four.
Um, I think, I think maybe something like that, I mean, maybe I can tell you right now.
So the rear yard setback doesn't fit?
The set.
Setback back then?
Eighty-eight, nineteen eighty-eight, yeah, in fact, I have the, if you're interested in looking, I have the plans here.
No, I just.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable with looking at this as, as if it was a corner lot, because because he says it may be someday, I mean, I don't think we can make a decision.
Well, never will. I don't think you can make a decision like that, that if there's gonna be road, you don't know for sure. So that's a backyard.
Yeah.
And that's substantial.
I guess the question would be, why was the fifty-foot retained?
Why was the what?
Why was the fifty-foot retained? When the subdivision was made.
What, was it?
Yeah.
I can only.
It was a while ago, I, I, I love.
I mean, I have, you know, a, a map of my property, and even though it's four and a half acres, there's dotted mine, so there's a potential existing, uh, roadway, uh, not that it is, but it clearly was created with the mindset, there's a fifty-foot section off to the north of my property, and, um, the only reason that would've been there would've been certainly to build a house on that fifty-foot right away, or that fifty-foot, uh, stretch of land, so. Um, I, I, I see the argument where that was probably.
It was probably a consideration, I mean, we often do that with the long-term planning.
Yeah, but my issue, my issue is the house isn't even built, or it's no foundation or anything, so it can be moved. The plans can be changed.
Right, this is obviously moving, moving forward to twenty feet, you know, make the driveway.
Like, like was said, it was said earlier, that's, they knew this. I understand they're trying to make it easier on themselves, but sometimes it doesn't work out though. And then they can change the design of the house. You have the driveway, garage towards the back. Garage is.
There's options.
Well, the garage forty-four feet off of the property line, something like that.
Yep.
So if we look at the balancing test, I can say that whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, and there are some other possibilities there. Undesirable change in neighborhood character or to nearby properties, I would not see that. Whether the request is substantial is about a fifty percent, uh, variance. Whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, I don't see any of those. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, and even if it was, it doesn't necessarily negate us from granting that variance. I would say mine. One more time.
One more time.
I, I make a motion that we decline.
You can make that motion. The motion so far is to decline the, the variance.
I'll second it.
You gotta second one of that. And show of hands on that. And do a roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Vassal of Ford.
No.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Alvin.
Yes.
Patrick DuHin.
I have to abstain.
You should put on the forty foot today, just for your. Oh, it says fifty on the bottom, stay on there.
Well, that's the current requirement, it's noted on the map, the subdivision line versus the, you know, the tree line to the back.
Oh, is that what's there? Okay.
They're gonna get you some glasses.
Huh?
Are you thinking it's gonna be some glasses?
Will you take that and put it down to this?
Is that a fall within the larger scale?
Concrete, cover.
It'd be good.
You got some right there.
What the hell's that gonna do? Is it for this? Do I use them?
I can, I can read. Last but not least, this twenty-three, twenty-three, Mr. Scott Bear. Uh, one thirty-five Archie Burdo Road is requesting, uh, to be allowed to place a forty-by-fifty-two storage building, two thousand, two thousand eighty square feet in a rear yard that is a hundred percent of the principal size of the, uh, principal, bigger than the principal building on the lot. It's not allowed in an R five district. Well, section five point one E, structures, is where we're going off from here. Alan has the details that were submitted to us, uh, from Mr. Bear and that we took today.
Here, Mr. Chairman, so I'll point out, there's a couple of picos I have up here. His house is not exactly eighteen hundred square feet, it's actually twelve hundred and twenty-four square feet by our records, okay? I believe it's the, the garage and the house together is about eighteen hundred square feet. So, we're gonna go through. This is Iris, here, Pleasant Ridge Road here, this is Archie Burdo Road here, it goes down at twenty-two. He's right here, close to the corner, not actually on the corner, but close to it. It is, you can see here, all zoned R five. So, this is his house right here, I believe, sir, you can tell the board, these parcels are now merged together?
We merged, we are in the process of doing that, yes.
Okay, so you're looking at put, back here, when you see my picture, you can probably see the stakes. Okay, so here's the house, driveway coming in, back behind the basketball goal, you can see there's one, two, three, four stakes, that's where it's going, right back here in this back area. So, he showed on here, so you really can't see, he didn't, didn't show the house, he basically just showed the, the garage, and I believe these are, are your property lines, your demission from the property lines, so twenty-five feet to the rear and seven feet to the side. So. Okay, sir, anything else you'd like to add, you can present to the board.
So what I want to build the board is just basically full storage, okay, I've got a motorhome and a couple of compact tractors. Couple of compact tractors and a utility vehicle and three lawn tractors and, and, and a couple of classic cars. And like, just want to basically put the building up, because I had, I had an existing building in Morrisonville. Um, but my father-in-law passed away a year ago, then the stepmother passed away six months ago. And so when that happened, her property went into probate and so. I lost, uh, the use of the storage room they had for that, okay? So, either I go go to find another property or I had this existing property here. And at one point, we had a double wide back there, I lived in the back, back of that house, that was my mother-in-law's house, before she passed away. And, um, at one point, it was a sixty by twenty-eight modular. Hasn't been there for the last ten, twelve years, okay? Um, so I have that property sitting there. Like the garage or a storage building, just my equipment. I mean, it backs up against the woods, stands like the other side. Unfortunately, the property next to it is the old bark home property, which is trashed. Um, uh, we keep it, well, man and groom, uh, we're gonna, if we get approved. Put a driveway attachment to that, because I just did that last year, put the driveway in and I want to attach to go off from it to the front of the new garage.
So the existing house is twelve hundred square feet?
Yeah, that's basic house, I mean, I didn't know if you could use the garage or not, because it's so close to the. You know, there was, there's a deck in between that joins the two, okay, so I didn't know if that was possible or not.
It would need a roof.
So that's why, I originally had measured it out, but with the garage attached.
The existing garage, do we know what the size of that?
It's twenty-five.
We do, we have four, what shows on records?
Five hundred seventy-six.
So the building I'm looking for is a, it's a full dome.
So it's basically eighteen hundred square feet for your existing structure.
Yeah, this one, something in two thousand eighty.
If you tie the garage to it. And you're asking for two thousand eighty square feet for that?
Yeah, because the motorhome is, is forty-foot long by, and it's got two slide outs on it, okay, and then about, like I say, three, well, two cars. Three compact tractors, two lawn mowers. All the toys, you know, they're out, now they're all outside and I prefer to, you know, my, my motorhome's never been outside, and I don't want to, okay, but. And I think if it's nicely backed there, it's.
Need two hundred square foot of variance.
So right, right now, you can't count.
You can't count the garage, yeah.
You wouldn't count the garage anyway. I mean, his, he's got detached garage. If he attaches it to his house, it doesn't add to his house, it just takes away from accessory structure. So he, no matter what, he's got twelve hundred twenty-four square feet of house.
Oh.
Okay.
I thought the garage.
If he attaches the garage, the garage isn't the footprint, it's the house, so.
So instead of two thousand.
No, I thought we, I thought that all encompassed it the last time we had that discussion. An attached garage would be part of a main structure for, for.
Right, but it, it takes it away from accessory structure, it doesn't add to livable space. It's his livable, it's his livable space. If he had residents above the garage, that's the livable space we added, we'd, we'd account it. And he just has an attached garage, you don't count the attached garage. You count the decks and the fortunes and the footprint of the livable space. So right now, in, in order to reduce the percentage of accessory to the square footage. He, he, he has attached a roof to that garage, to the house. And that garage square footage goes away, so that's five hundred whatever square feet you take off. It's still a twelve hundred twenty-four square foot house. But now, now it says twelve hundred twenty-four to two thousand eighty for the new garage.
True, and with that garage, it's twenty-six hundred, six square feet that is asking for.
Twenty-six fifty-six, right, with, so it's hot, you see what I'm saying? So if he attaches it, he doesn't gain square footage for the house, but he takes off square footage for accessory structure.
I'm confused.
Are you confused?
Just the, I, I just want to see the definition of what the main, uh, primary building square footage, we have that in our book?
Twelve's twenty-four.
No, I'm just saying with the definition of that, because I, I'm, I mean, every discussion I remember having that included.
I know a deck would be added to the, the whole space.
Well, you know.
I think a porch and things like that.
Right, but we've, we've never, we've never counted a garage square footage unless it has livable space above it.
I'm going to open up the public hearing portion of the meeting and.
Send it to my wife.
I see anybody jumping up. Go to the public hearing portion of the meeting, I've done my duty, I've said that about ten times tonight, I think. And I think Brad's looking up the definition right now.
Your principal building. Building or buildings in which the main or principal use of the lot is located. Any building which provides sleeping quarters shall be considered a principal building. Except the farm worker housing shall be considered an accessory building for agricultural use.
Sleeping quarters makes it. What livable space is.
Doesn't say anything about decks?
I think we're reading generous adding a deck at or, or.
Right, but when you're going to use it, that, that would get a more openness of what? You can't just artificially assume.
I would agree with you, Bosso.
What?
I agree with what you're saying.
I mean, that's.
We've only been on precedent of what we've said is decks and additions count for the square footage. It's not in the definitions of there, it's precedence of how this board has interpreted, uh, taxable square footage. As we said, that you're getting taxed on the primary structure. I agree with what you're saying, it's, I, I don't know where it's in here that it says or that it ever has. This board has interpreted the square footage as that's anything attached to the main structure. And I don't, I, I can read it again, but I don't know where it's going to say that you get credit for decks.
And my understanding is Supreme Court says that a municipality can't. Dictate or assume what the definition of it, of something is, just because they assume that, it has to be either defined, if it's not defined.
Or if you have precedent setting, if you have precedent.
Not, not even precedent setting, the Supreme Court just says, we, we as a municipality can't assume what the definition would be. That's, that's the way the Supreme Court will use, but.
I am not an attorney and we don't have one here, so I do not know.
Tried looking it up earlier, but don't have good cell service here, but I can bring it in and give it to you if you want.
Well, right now, I guess I don't know where I'm actually at.
So what a thousand, would it be a thousand twenty-four square foot variance for width, right? Did we do that, was it?
Six hundred fifty-six square feet. Nine is the twelve twenty-four, right?
Yes.
Two, three, four. Fourteen hundred thirty-two.
Over. Over, so you'd be, Mr. Bear would be asking for a.
Seventy-five percent. Was that two hundred and one?
Hundred and twenty percent.
Hundred percent variance, but we want to go on square footage, making sure that the square footage matches the two that's being asked for.
Well, I mean, but that's. That's looking at it as. The garage gets added on to two thousand and eighty. Five hundred seventy-six for the garage, brings it up twenty-six fifty-six and the existing structure is at twelve twenty.
Now, is there any way, you know, sorry, Zach, because I mean, you got a lot more here than you need for a forty-foot and all that equipment you showed.
Two cars.
Yeah, but you're talking.
Two compact tractors.
And that thing is eight foot.
Forty-four.
Yeah, but it's eight foot wide, I've got a forty-four.
Yeah, but just lines that go out.
I gotta put them out.
No, I would do it if I was working in there or something, okay, yeah.
But that's only going to go out eighteen inches.
Well, it's more than, I think it's more than twenty. It's a good size, okay.
So the variance is two hundred and twenty percent?
Yeah.
Not a hundred.
Yeah, that's a, so, then they thought you could downsize it a little bit.
I, I just figured all this stuff that I have.
I gotta ask these questions.
I understand, I just want, I just want to have enough room that if I wanted to go in there and work on the motorhome or. But I have no intentions of using it for anything commercial, it's just all storage.
I understand fourteen.
I mean, this, I mean, there's, it's not going to need drinking or anything, it's just a slide, okay, it's a block building.
Well, you get twelve twenty-four, it's basically.
Subtract the five seventy-six. For the garage, you end up with six hundred and forty-eight square foot of allowed accessory structure. That's twelve hundred and twenty-four for the house, you know, subtract the garage to five seventy-six.
Garage is already added into twenty thousand, two thousand eighty.
Oh, that's included in his calculation of the garage?
No, it isn't, that's what I'm saying. What he would be asking for with the garage, the existing garage that added into the two thousand eighty, the forty-by-fifty-two building. It comes up to twenty-six fifty-six. He has twelve hundred and twenty-four square feet. The difference is fourteen hundred thirty-two square feet.
That's not what he's asking for, though, he's only.
Yeah, he is asking for that.
No, he's at, that the five hundred and seventy-six is already there.
But that's, it's got to be added into the whole process.
So right now, on the rec, what we have is twelve, twelve hundred and twenty-four square feet, like, not added in anything. That's what's on the record today, that's what you're going up, correct? Not assuming.
Right, I'm just saying that then we would subtract the five hundred and seventy-six for the accessory structure that's there and allowed. Right, for the current garage.
Right, because it's only about half of wood.
Uh, we use him six hundred and forty-eight.
So he can.
Square feet of allowable building and he's asking for two thousand, so to me that's two hundred and twenty percent only what's allowed. That's all I'm saying.
For your square footage of accessory structures.
Right.
Yes.
Saying the same thing, dude, nevermind.
Well, it just changes, it changes the dynamic of what.
Variance is merged.
Oh, that's the other question, did you actually file the merge form? It did get formed, but.
I gave it to the girl and, that same day.
That's what we, uh, we had the discussion before, when it's a subdivision, we see. Or you get like a recorded D, but it usually doesn't go all the way until March of next year, which will on a. Tax roll and then taken from parcel ID number like say two forty-five, four eleven, and it combines it, we want to make sure that. Uh, because we don't usually get the, we, the town doesn't get it until it goes down to county, then the county brings it back to us, approves the merge.
I, I still didn't understand why that, because it was one thirty-three border road and I had a house there and that was the address. And I had to put the two together, why, why couldn't I have put the garage on one thirty-three border road, which I already had the property, was a big, and was big enough.
Because you don't have any primary structure there.
They don't want lots with just a garage and no house.
Yeah, we don't want to turn it into.
Yeah, the house, the double wide that was there was a primary structure.
Right, so they're okay with not being a double wide.
Because it was a living space, yeah, yeah.
Alright, that's where we're at, uh. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. I'm not sure on that one. Undesirable change in neighborhood character or nearby properties, I don't think that would be. Whether the request is substantial, I guess is where we would definitely say that that is substantial being two hundred and ten. And whether the request will have adverse fiscal or, or environmental effects, I don't see any there. And being self-created does not necessarily negate us from granting that variance, but that's where we're at as far as my. Statements go, so, anybody else have any other statements that you can make?
Well, once again, uh, my view, excuse me, my view is that, uh, there's, he can downsize that easily. And not have such a big footprint, and for that, I, I just can't agree with the granting a variance, okay?
So you're making a, a negative of your decline into variance.
I will be, yes.
Well, then you made that motion, oh, I don't know if anybody, everybody else has hinted to their discussions.
I think it's quite substantial. Who he's asking for.
Anything from you, Bosso?
Nope.
I'll make a motion if we can organize it, okay?
You got a second?
One second.
Hands on that, and roll call vote.
Henry Hale.
Yes.
Bosso LaForte.
No.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marion Ozin.
Yes.
Patrick DuHing.
Yes.
So, so what size building could I actually go to with that, with that from past? Something roughly, I think, six forty-eight?
Six hundred forty-eight.
And you wouldn't need a variance.
I wouldn't need a variance for that.